Hello and welcome to another episode of Harden Local Weekly. We're here live with you with our normal crew plus one special guest. Hey Selena, how are you doing today?
Doing great. How are you?
Great. We're super excited to have you and look forward to the conversation that Scott are gonna have here after Nate and John go. How are you doing? Yes, great. Nate, how are you doing this?
I'm good. I'm great.
Great. Scott?
Doing awesome, man. Yep, yep. Stay busy. What about you, man?
Doing good. Doing good. I'm back from, I took a couple of trips over the past couple of weeks, so got recharged and ready to get back to work.
It's always important.
I think so. How are you doing, John?
Outstanding. Doing well. How about you?
Doing good. You been out at the fair yet?
I have not. I've been working. Usually I'm here every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but I'm definitely gonna be checking it out tomorrow when I'm off.
Great. Alright. Well, we're gonna get started. We got quite a few things to cover, but before we do, I always like to highlight the QR code here. Go ahead and get on that. And if you don't have something, take a picture with it. I think it was John or Nate, one of us said you could take a screenshot of it and it'll pull that thing up. Or you can go to hardenlocal.com and there's a checklist there. But make sure you also click the bell, top left corner, and put your email address in. Alright, we'll go ahead and get started with the business updates. Nate, you ready to go?
Uh, yeah. I am ready. So sign of the times, I guess, so to speak. The Fab Lab in Mulberry Square, which was started off by some of the trainers from E-Town Swim, I believe. Their sign is now up and over there. And then downtown, the local butcher, which is replacing the former Fastenal building, their sign up as well. So that boosts their visibility in the community. Fab Lab's been open for two months and I think the local butcher is trying for late July, sometime in August. I know a lot of people are excited and don't have to go to Boone's Butcher Shop in Barshorn anymore. I know Hub House especially is getting their meat for their smash burgers from them. Don't know what's up with the audio still.
It's okay. It's not, it's not that bad. There's just a couple of clubs.
Duff's Famous Wings, which is, if you know the hotel corridor, as I call it, where Texas Outlaw was, Duff's Famous Wings are Buffalo-based. They are moving there. They've been doing quite a few renovations there. If you saw their Facebook post, the interior looks completely redone. I think it looks great. I know Christie Wright, they posted that, has done some artwork for showcasing the local high schools. She's got some murals that'll be in there too. They will be opening pretty soon as well. I think definitely by the end of the summer. I don't have exact date. But it looks fabulous in there. And going to the south side, we know Glendale is gonna be hopping the next one, two, three years with developments. And I've been told a new storage facility is being built at 222, which is the main road that goes through downtown Glendale. I just happen to live on the backside of it off of Sports Lake Road, right? Dead when I grew up. And 222 Mud Splash is gonna be a storage facility. And then what people call the Key Mansion, which is the big white house as soon as you cross the interstate bridge. I've been told that a credit union is gonna go there. I don't know which one yet. We do know L&amp;N Credit Union is coming to the former Wings and Rings in E-Town, but I don't know which this one's gonna be. I have been told it's been rezoned commercial and that's what that's going to be. So lots of stuff going on over there. I did see a small thing where a development had its sign stolen. Local Realtor posted that. I missed that one. Somebody put the sign up and somebody stole it. Forgot the name of it.
Yeah, let me pull that up. You keep talking, I'll find it.
And let's see. Did you say Meadow Lake or?
It was Meadow Lake in Radcliffe.
Yeah.
It was Christie Jordan that posted it.
Well, that's very unfortunate.
Yeah. And let me share that real quick, so people can see what it looks like. Think I got it right? Yeah, sure. It's kinda like, not right.
It's on the right side.
Yeah, yeah. It's because of the narrowness of the screen. Let's see if I can fix it. No, I can't. So we'll just go back. I'll get better. I'll learn next time. Meadow Lake, Riddler World. And go ahead.
And then I did see OVW announced, we had mentioned it, but OVW announced it is coming to the Bluegrass Sportsplex officially. Tickets are now on sale. You can go to OVW's website and get those. Because initially, all we knew is they were hosting. Now we know what the date is and tickets are on sale. I didn't grab the ticket prices. But for local wrestling fans, which I grew up on, you know John's one, it's nice to have it in town instead of a little. And that's about all I got for now.
Great. And we also should probably highlight the, the new golf spot that's gonna be opening soon again too.
Uh, yeah, I still don't have the official date, but I'm pretty sure Cosmic might be opening next week. If not, definitely by the end of the month. We know it's by the, it'll be by the end of the month. Uh, so I know we were talking about it before we did it. I know Scott and I, either one of us saw, but that place is impressive. I think everybody's been out there that's seen it, seen the pictures, seen the videos. It is incredible.
And those of those that aren't as familiar, because I'm not either. Half the time, whenever I'm on here, I'm trying to do, control the stream. Can you explain a little bit more what Fab Lab is?
Uh, Fab Lab is, uh, it's primarily women, but it's not just women, because there are women that go there. But it is, they've got, I think they've got cardio classes. I think they've got Zoom, something like that. They've got cycling, I believe. So they call them studios. So you have like smaller groups, but definitely one-on-one person. You're not watching a video. You're not watching somebody else's. You have a coach or teacher with you. And they have a schedule of classes on, on their webs, on their website and in their business for what's going on at what time. I don't know if there's a membership or if you can just do one-offs. I haven't gone that much into it. But it did fill a need after the unfortunate closing of E-Town Swim.
Great. Thank you for that information. Anybody else have any questions for Nate? Alrighty. Well, wait, thank you, Nate.
Yep, now I have John.
Yeah, feel free to, I know you have to leave early, so drop off whenever you need to, but.
Yeah, 1:30 at all times. So I should be, I should be able to hang around for John at least.
Yeah, a comment from Amy here. She was just saying Meadow Lake, Riddler World, so you can find that information about that sign. So if anybody knows anything about that, you can probably reach out to, I guess, Radcliffe Police.
I'm sure the police would really like to know.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, it's weird. It just went up yesterday. Just weird for a sign to get taken that quick. Okay, John. Go over here.
Yeah, I'm up here. I'm up there. Busy week, busy week going on. We got the fair going on along with a bunch of other activities and things happening. One thing that was this morning, but they're gonna keep doing here, coming up, is Running Souls Morning Meetup. Uh, it's gonna be 6:30 to 7:30 public run down at the Running Souls. It's a fun time to do. Uh, also, there's a lawn party at the Freeman Lake tonight, Little Orchestra. That's gonna be a fun time. Again, free concert, food trucks, lawn games, all the fun stuff. Go down there, take your family, bring your chair, bring a blanket, hang out and have a good time.
And those events are today, right?
Yeah, well, the, the running was this morning, but they're gonna do that each morning on Wednesday mornings. So next Wednesday morning, if you wanna join up with the Running Souls, head on down there. And then tonight is the, the bandstand, the Little Orchestra.
Okay, great.
Tomorrow at the bandstand as well, that Sunrise Yoga, Phil. Did we hit the quota for you to go to that yet?
Not yet.
Okay, alright.
I think we got twenty some, there were twenty-five at peak last week.
That's another way. Yeah. I think, I, we'll get there. We're gonna get you there. We're gonna get you stretched out in Limbert. But that's something fun to do. Also, there's a Tea Time at the Harden County Library at three tomorrow. All ages, it's free. So if you ever wanna go have a high tea, enjoy that. That's happening there.
Now we're talking about the tea you drink, not golf.
The tea drink, yep, the tea drink, not the, not the golf. Although we do have a drink called Tea Time here at BBT. It's like an Arnold Palmer but boozy. And it's called Tea Time. But T-E-E, not T-E-A.
We're drinking tea at Tea Time.
That's right. That's it.
That's a great, that's a great segue there. I like that.
Some good stuff. They need to maybe get that out at Cosmic too, you know? Uh, Harden County Fair, a lot of things going on tomorrow night. We got the Youth Dairy Cattle Show, the Petting Zoo, Little Miss and Mr. Pigeon, Rasslin'. We got some Rasslin' going on. That's at 7:30 tomorrow. And then the Bullwhip Rodeo. So if you got interested in any of that, that's going tomorrow. Also, we got the Downtown Walking Tour and the Tab in the Garden every Thursday. Swing on out to that. Friday, a lot, a lot of things going on out at the library for, for young kids. They got music and movement at 10:00 AM. Uh, Super Mario Hour, which sounds kinda fun, but it's from nine to thirteen. I can't really do that. Uh, also a Lego Club, that's nine to thirteen at the library. Some, some fun daytime kid activities you can take your kid to. In Red, or in Fort Knox, they got a Low Country Boyle on Friday. That sounds good. And also, all those, all those fair events, tractor pull, tractor driving. Uh, Miss Harden County, Patty, Gracie Yates, who's an outstanding young lady and she's got a great voice. She sings Snake Farm, which is one of my favorite songs ever. The best love song ever written. If you've never heard of the song Snake Farm, go listen to her sing it. It's phenomenal. Uh, they also have the gated horse show and Bucks and Bronco rodeo on Friday night.
Great. I wonder what the difference between the Bullwhip Rodeo and the Bucks and Bronco rodeo is?
I think maybe, is the Bullwhip maybe like lower key, like you're not riding anything, like maybe the, the younger, like you rope and stuff? Instead of riding stuff? I don't know. That may be the difference.
Yeah, sounds like a good guess. And I've also put a little clicker down at the bottom of the screen. So if you do wanna learn more about the Harden County Fair and go to the website, they got everything you need to know there.
All the fun stuff down there, that's right. Um, Saturday night, I got the Bourbon Ride out at Limestone Branch and Log Still. It starts at Boundary Oaks though, so it's gonna kinda ride around through all the spots. But it starts at Boundary Oak at 10:00 AM. So it's $10 per bike, all for a good cause. Also Friday night.
Do you have to be part of that club or just show up and pay your $10?
I think you show up and pay your $10, yeah, and you can join that ride.
Great.
Footloose is Friday, so that's gonna be a fun time. Again, you got the little teaser last week. Now, now Footloose is popping. It's at the Youth Harden Theater, Harden County, seven to ten on Saturday. And if you got a cute baby, take him, take him to the Hard Catatour. Also, there's the King Arthur Basin Contest. Tiny Mister, that's ages two to four. The Dylan West Band and the Tractor Pull. Uh, that's, that's a fun time. I think that's my favorite event at the fair. I don't understand it. I don't know the rules. But like, everybody gets just amped up about it.
It's always been my favorite.
It is a fun time, for sure. Uh, also Friday or Saturday night at BBT, we got Casey and Romi. I think it's gonna be the last time they play. Uh, they do like a hiatus sometimes. I think they're playing Saturday and then maybe not for a little while, but if you, if you haven't seen them play, they, they're pretty fun to check out. After, after all that Harden County Fair stuff, come on over this way. And then also Sunday, we've got something fun. Uh, the Cousins Maine Lobster Truck. Have you all had any of that ever?
Well, when I felt like standing in that line.
It takes a long time, but yeah, if you gotta get there early. Uh, they usually are at Flywheel, but this Sunday, they're gonna be at the O'Reilly. O, O, O'Reilly. I say, that's right, auto parts. And also lobster parts, lobster parts as well, lobster tail, all the fun stuff. They're, they're delicious. But get there soon, get there early.
I mean, they're 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, is that right?
Yep, yep, yep. It's 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So that's the longest period of time I've seen them open too. So that's, maybe they brought an extra, like, truck or trailer full of lobster to take care of business. But again, maybe take a cheer to that too. Like you can sit in that chair while you're waiting in line. Be smart. Uh, but yeah, that's, that's what we got going on. Any, any questions?
I saw something about JD Shelburne you had here.
Uh, yeah. Right? Yeah, he'll be at Liquor Barn from one to three. I think the post says two to four as well, but looks like they updated it to one to three and just had to change it.
They're gonna be playing a little too?
He is gonna be playing a little, correct. And he's gonna be signing his new bottles of his new brand that he has. And he was just announced that he's gonna headline the New County Fair.
Nice.
And he just went on the Opry, I think Friday night on July 5th. I was in Florida at the time, but that was big for him. I know huge, just to get his name out there and just perform on that stage. So, but he's, I know he's performed in several E-Town on places. So that's gonna be nice. I'm happy for my following. He follows me, but he worked his tail off where he is.
And what is this about the local magician?
Yeah, so Aaron Hart, he was a local magician. I think he did the free show the other day at Extreme with Eddie Milburn doing the airbrush. Hart performed all over the place and he was selected by Lance Burke, who is a Kentucky native and Vegas headliner. And they will be co-coming so here locally. But I don't know the date or location yet.
Okay.
But that's, I think that's just huge for Aaron to be able to perform with him. And it's nice to not have to go to Vegas to see them. But that's, that's gonna be awesome collaboration.
Just make sure you stay, if you haven't joined, join our Harden Local group for updates on those sorts of things. When we, when we don't know now, we can, we usually put it in that group. But anyhow, what, what events are you guys most excited for this week?
I'm excited for Footloose for obvious reasons, but Nate, what were you saying?
I was gonna say Footloose. I'm, I'm mad that I kinda worked at mine, so I couldn't see it the other night. But based on the photos, what a heck of a turnout. Uh, so I think the real show would be great. And I think the Little Orchestra come back here. And I know that I've been here a while, I'm a long, remember the day where they would come every summer and we would have fireworks every week. So I'm glad to see them come back. And I would think probably soon that the next one would probably be at the amphitheater once it's built. I would think that's where they would wanna go. Uh, but it's good to see them come back. I do miss not having fireworks this time, but to have back-to-back weekends where you had Footloose last week at the, at the bandstand. And then this week, you've got Little Orchestra. I'm glad to see the bandstand being used and great weather last week. Hopefully, it's great tonight. Kinda cloudy over at my house. But, and then the fair. I mean, it's, it's good for, uh, good family stuff. I, I heard the exceptional pageant yesterday. I saw pictures from those and somebody said that may be the best event of the fair. It's always great. It's good not to be, pour down rain every single night this week compared to some years. Just lots of good stuff going on. Get out, get out. Just be safe and stay cool, because it does get hot.
Great. Well, thanks, John and Nate, for all the updates, business and events. Appreciate it. Alright, we are gonna go ahead and start on the special guest segment with Selena. And Scott's going to be interviewing her. So we'll get it switched over here.
Alright. You let me know whenever you're ready, Phil, and I can kinda just slide into it.
Yeah, I think we're, I usually like to let our special guests talk for a couple of minutes first about whatever's important to them. So if you wanted Selena before Scott asking some questions, you wanna start off with anything going on in Vine Grove? And also maybe some updates on your Get Your Money Right movement?
I sure can, yeah. Um, there's a lot going on in Vine Grove. This Friday in Vine Grove will be our first, first Fridays uh, event this summer, because last month's was rained out. But we're going to have fireworks, food trucks, we have a DJ. It'll be exciting to be out there. I know I heard Footloose, so I was like, oh, but um, our first Friday event is always well attended and it should be a lot of fun. Especially the one with the fireworks this month. And that's on Friday night for, I think we'll get started around five o'clock. And then we also this month have a Mimosa Fest. It will be our first ever Mimosa Fest. We'll also have bourbon tastings, craft beer tastings. And that event has sold a, a lot of tickets. There are a lot of people interested in this event. This is the first time that I know of in the state of Kentucky. I know they have them in Atlanta and Memphis, but it will be right here in Little Old Vine Grove. Some of the other things that we have going on is we're updating our infrastructure, getting, trying to catch up with all the growth that we've had over the last 10 years. So we're getting our wastewater treatment plan upgraded. We're getting sidewalks on Knox Avenue. And so we're just trying to get grants and work on those projects and making Vine Grove beautiful. Well, even more beautiful, I should say. Yeah.
Nice. Well, Selena, you had answered a couple of questions that I had all right, right there. So that's good as far as people might be knowing about. So one question is, since you are a Vine Grove City Council member, what are some challenges that you see Vine Grove having that the community should know more about that they can get involved with?
Well, um, I can answer the biggest, our biggest challenge is flooding. Uh, and we have been working on that. We did take out a loan to get some of that corrected, but there, there's still a lot more work to do. And, and it's just slow. City government is slow. And so nothing happens fast, but the, I don't know necessarily if the community can get involved in any way in that other than notifying us and letting us know right away if something is flooded or if their yard is flooded or whatever the case may be. But whenever we have a rain event, we all cringe. It just, yeah.
I cannot understand that, understand that. So something that most people may not know is when you and I got together, it was with your Get Money Right.
Yes.
So go ahead and tell us about your Get Money Right as far as, you know, how to get started, why, and just kinda let us know what's going on with your Get Money.
Sure. Well, former councilwoman Tanya C. Brooks and I got together one night and we were on the phone talking about how women were coming in her bank and they didn't know anything about their finances. They were coming in asking questions, maybe their spouse died or, or whatever the case. But she said, you know, I'm just kinda tired of that. We need to have an event called Get Your Money Right Girl. And I said, or Girl, Get Your Money Right. But anyway, uh, long story short, we, we had our first event. Fifty ladies showed up to this event. We had about five speakers. Fourteen people had their credit pooled, five purchased a home. Um, it was a great event, but one of the messages we kept hearing from the ladies was, oh man, I wish my husband could hear this. I really wish my husband could. So the following year, it just, it was just Get Your Money Right. We left the girl off. We invited everyone. And we've just been going ever since. Of course, you know, Tanya passed, but I kept it going. During COVID, we went on Zoom. We never stopped because we want people to get their money right. And we want as many people as possible to get this information. And it's been free every year except one year. We decided to start charging so that we could offer more. And, um, but we went back to free this year because we did Get Your Money Right with scholarships. Every year, it's a different theme. So we had Get Your Money Right Business to help the small businesses after COVID. And we were able to give one business owner $500. She won $500 and it was amazing. She started crying, saying she was about to close her business. And I mean, it was just, uh, it was, it was awesome.
I think I was there for that, because I think I slightly remember that.
Yes. That, that was last year. And then this year, she became one of the sponsors for the event. Her business had completely turned around and she's super successful. So she sponsored the event with Get Your Money Right scholarships. That was at North Harden High School. That was the first time that we had two events going on at the same time. So we had the students in, in the gym and we had the adults getting their money right, the parents on the other side in the cafeteria. And that was pretty amazing.
That's good. That's good.
Yeah, so.
That's good. So I do, I'm part of the group, so I see you making updates in there. So with that, with your updates, notifications, what, what's going through the pipeline now? What do you, what, what do you got going next for Get Your Money Right?
Well, I'm proud to announce that we are now a nonprofit. All of these years, it was either self-funded or we were able to get some scholarships. We, we were under the Legacy Foundation umbrella for a while. And we decided this year just to go ahead and start a Get Your Money Right nonprofit. And we also have a Get Your Money Right book coming out. And, and so we're, we're excited about that. We applied for our 501(c)(3) so that we could start taking donations and fundraising. And I'm very excited about the book. The, the book is about a thirty-year-old woman that is living in, at poverty level. And she wants to get her money right, but she doesn't know how. So there's a ten-step plan in there for her to go from where she is to where she would like to be, which is a restaurant owner. And it took her 10 years, but she was able to implement the plan and become a restaurant owner. But anyway, I won't spoil it for you. It's, it's a great book. And so we're hoping to be able to use those funds to keep helping people in the community to get their money right.
That's good. And this book, is that already available or is it gonna be announced at some point?
Yes, it is not available. It will be announced within the next two weeks. So stay tuned on the Get Your Money Right. Yes, it is not available. It will be announced within the next two weeks. So uh stay tuned on the Get Your Money Right Facebook page. Uh we do have a Get Your Money Right. It's a private group, but I'm going to create a different one so that um other people can join. But yeah.
Nice, nice, okay. Now with your Good Money Right and I know with your involvement at the city council, where do you see the intersection of where maybe, you know, let's just say, for example, if we were to take the Get Your Money Right and bring it to government or education or things of that nature, what would be the best way or maybe the best message for somebody to kind of get involved with Get Your Money Right and maybe apply the principles that you teach?
Um, the best way for someone is to reach out to me right now, just to reach out to me. And um and I will get them plugged in because I teach financial literacy classes at Goodwill. Once a month, I teach at uh in the, any school that asks me to come in, I go in and I teach the students. I love to mentor young people in the uh Men of Light group, the Brother to Brother group. So I will come in and teach those classes anywhere throughout the year. But for Get Your Money Right event, I would love to have people to join the committee, the planning committee and to be a part of that event as well.
Nice, yeah. We do have to get our money right. You know, it's always something, I'm sure you hear about it in your career and even for me or everyone here listening, you know, we don't get our money right, we can become broke. So if you were to give one important financial piece of advice to us or everybody watching, what would that number one uh piece of advice be?
And before you say it, we're not financial advisors, right?
There, yes, absolutely. Um just giving advice, but one thing that I'm, one thing I'm noticing lately is that people are not starting to save for retirement early enough. And so they're walking around fifty years old, playing catch up, trying to add more, you know, just not enough saved or having to work longer because they can't retire. So it, for the young people out there, I would say go ahead and get started. Start saving now for retirement. It seems so far away, but the years go by so fast. And before you know it, you're um, you're thinking about retiring and it's just not enough in your uh investments.
That is true, that is true. I'm always looking at my savings and stuff and seeing where can I save more money or stuff. So that's always, always, always a good tip, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, is there anything else that you would like to add about your Get Your Money Right or anything else that you're doing?
Well, I'd just like to say that anyone that is interested in increasing or improving your financial future, I work for South Central Bank. So you can come by the bank branch anytime and uh talk to one of the loan officers or talk to me about your finances and what you would like to see happen over the, I had a couple, a, a business owner at Radcliffe to come in last week. And they just wanted to sit down and show me everything they had and see how, what they could do to improve. Because there's always areas of improvement, money market accounts, CDs, whatever it is, um South Central Bank can help you.
Nice, awesome. Well, Selena, thank you. Is there any questions that you, uh, anything else you want to add or any questions that you have for, for us?
Well, let's see. Um I love what you all are doing here. How long have you been doing this?
This is our seventh one, so seven weeks.
Oh, seven weeks. Oh, wow. This is great. Keeping the community informed. That is what I'm all about. So I will definitely share your page, make sure that uh everyone in my network knows about it. And I just appreciate you all having me on here and I look forward to seeing everyone at First Fridays on uh this Friday, July eleventh, which happens to be my birthday. Hey, so come on out. And if you want to bring some gifts and money out to me Friday, I'll be at Optimus Park.
That's great. And we thank you for sharing what we're doing. And also uh what's a good, what is the Vine Grove City website? Is it vinegrove.org? Is that right?
Yes, vinegrove.org.
And that's a good resource for people.
And our Facebook page also, yes.
And then of course you said you had to get your money right Facebook page.
Yes.
I think.
Yes. And, and um also there's some backpack giveaways coming up for the students that are going back to school. And that'll be at the end of the month on Ju- July twenty sixth, the same day as our Mimosa Festival. So um you know, if you find it in your heart and want to donate school supplies, reach out to one of those organizers and and help some of the students.
And where can they reach out at?
Oh, okay. One is um Mary Gathers is hosting her annual uh backpack giveaway and that will be at the Gathering Bakery on July twenty sixth from eight to twelve PM. And then um the Sigma Gamma Rho are hosting theirs at Radcliffe Elementary School. On the same day, July twenty sixth from twelve to two, I believe. Yeah, twelve to two or twelve to four, something like that. And um and then there's a, the last one will be on August the second and that will be at Restoration Worship Center in Radcliffe. And um yeah, so you can go to any one of those three places and donate, yes.
Great. Thank you, Selena, for coming on.
Oh, you're so welcome. I hated that I wasn't able to get on before the Radcliffe Firework Event. That was a pretty good event as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was okay. We had, and you know, it probably wasn't much fun to try to do it from your car anyway.
Right, right. The phone kept overheating.
That's a thing you never think's gonna happen until it does, so.
Right, yes.
Um appreciate you coming back this time around.
I appreciate y'all having me.
All right. Anybody else, John, you got anything that your memory forgot? What's your, what's your wheel back there anyway?
Oh yeah, uh so that, we had that last year during the uh, the Cruising the Heartland, which is coming up here soon. We haven't talked about it yet, but it's coming up here soon. Um little spin the wheel, win a prize thing for uh BBT. So again, uh Cruising the Heartland will be coming up here at the end of the month. Uh we'll, we'll talk a lot about that, you know. Um it's a, it's a fun event. They shut down Dixie and just have a lot of cool cars to check out. Lot of fun events.
Nice.
It is a great event. Alrighty, well, everyone, thank you for watching. Remember to check out a QR code up here and go uh to our link tree and get signed up, follow all our different social medias. I've started to add all the clips to um to also to TikTok now. So we have a TikTok handle, which it's listed on that page, which you can also get there by going to hardenedlocal.com. Don't forget to support the fair this week, the Harden County Fair. And that uh I'll throw that website up there again real quick. It's hardenedcofair.com. Should be scrolling across the bottom of your screen right now. If you want to check the schedule, goes on all week. Scott, you got anything else for us?
Uh I was just, not really, but you know, I would just say, you know, it's still summer, hydrate, be safe out there or sunscreen if you need to.
Right.
Uh if you're like me, you like going and running, look both ways. Yeah, run on the trails. I've run on the trails around here a little bit. So it's, just get out, exercise, stay healthy.
Absolutely.
All right. And we also know like, uh thanks Johnny um for letting us know. There had been some, a sound issue earlier. That's why I muted a couple of you. I think that fixed it somewhere in here. But uh there it is. I keep clicking the wrong button. Thank you, Johnny, for letting us know that. And Amy, thanks for reminding us of where that sign was still on at Meadow Lake, Real Other World. And that is everything we have for you guys today. So thank you for joining us. Have a great week and we will we'll probably have a different schedule. We're, we're actually talking about switching the stream to Tuesday afternoons, but we'll let you guys know.
Okay.
On the page. I'm gonna go ahead and, in the stream. Thank you, guys.